County Del Norte is now meeting in regular session. It is Tuesday, the 23rd. We're going to start our meeting today with a moment of reflection. Please join me. Now I would ask you to all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Introduction of new employees. Do we have any new employees for the county today?
We're going to recognize the sheriff in the back. He had an employee in regards to recognize this at retirement.
This guy was a cop. We're all safe. He looks a little different because he's recently retired and we call this his freedom beard.[94.86][94.86](Laughter). I want to talk about Mike Shine for a minute. I'm the sheriff, for those of you that don't know me. And Mike has recently retired after 20 years of service to the Del Norte County Sheriff's Office. So I put together some mementos here from his career. I have a picture of when he first started and a picture we took just a couple months ago and they look about the same.[121.25][121.25](Laughter). And we have a patch from when he started and a patch now. Our patches have changed within our department. So I put together a little letter and I'll just read through that. Deputy Shine began his career in law enforcement after graduating from the Napa, California, Police Academy. His entire career was served as a loyal deputy for the Del Norte County Sheriff's Office. He started on the job in July of 1994 and retired in April of 2015. After 20 years of dedicated public safety service, I feel privileged to recognize him for his professionalism, commitment, and integrity. As a deputy, Michael was primarily assigned to patrol operations, corrections, and the courts. During the latter, he's also been responsible for civil service, including serving evictions and restraining orders in the field. He spent the majority of his career as a bailiff. He has managed security and safety concerns for some of the longest and most dangerous jury trials in the history of this county. For the majority of his career, Deputy Shine also served the Del Norte County Sheriff's Office as a defensive tactics instructor. He taught law enforcement officers from many of our local agencies how to stay safe and reduce the likelihood of injuries while making arrests and defending themselves against attack. The skills that Deputy Shine passed on to his countless law enforcement family members over the decades have in no doubt saved lives. He's also passed along these skills to young men and women participating in the annual Redwood Coast Explorer Leadership Academy since its inception 13 years ago. In fact, Deputy Shine began his study of the martial arts around 1970 and has instructed countless men, women, and children since that time. Deputy Shine cannot be replaced. Although I applaud him for retiring at a time when he may still enjoy his retirement, his presence will be sorely missed. He was a friendly face for our courts and a staple for our local judicial system. He was a great deputy, an excellent teacher, and a mentor to many, myself included. Your sheriff and friend, Eric Apperson. Thank you very much.[250.26][250.26](Applause).
Yeah, still bold.[263.83][263.83](Laughter).
Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, do you want to?
You know, alls I can say is after the timber industry folded, if it hadn't have been for the retraining that California gave me, the opportunity to go to work for the sheriff's office, I probably would have been like a lot of folks that had to move up into Washington to follow the timber industry. I'm grateful that you folks gave me the opportunity to finish raising my family here and to retire here. And it'll always kind of like be right here in my heart. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Words are not enough to express the gratitude that the county had for the job that you did. Thank you very much. At this time, the chair would request any deletions, corrections, or additions from board members to matters on the agenda. In order to put something on the agenda that would be an action item at this time, it would have to have arisen subsequent to posting the agenda and require action prior to our next meeting. Any such items? No? Okay. And let's get a brief report from the county administrative officer.
Well, over the last couple of weeks, we've been busy in trying to put together the recommended budget that's before you today, as well as dealing with personnel issues and evaluations, a number of meetings with the public and department heads, and we have also been assisting some other departments when they have some deficiencies in their staffing.
Thank you. And I'm sure we're going to hear a lot more when the budget comes up. This time, I'd like to get a motion on the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
So moved in second to approve the consent agenda. Any public comment on any item that is on the consent agenda? Back to the board. Any other comments? Poll a vote, please.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes, I need to recuse myself on item number 11, a conflict of interest.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Finnegan?
Yes. Let's take up item 27, which is to consider the approved, proposed BACRA budget. The Border Coast Regional Airport Authority budget is provided on Article IV funding of the BACRA JPA agreement. Who's going to present on this?
Susan Doherty, Program Manager with the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority. So you have before you the budget for the upcoming fiscal year. This budget has been thoroughly reviewed by the BACRA Board and was approved at their last meeting in June. There are just a couple of key things I want to point out to you on the budget this year. First of all, we're budgeting a $50,000 drop in revenues due to a combination of not having a air carrier in till mid-September and also allowing that air carrier time to build up passenger flights. We feel that this is a very conservative estimate. This budget does not reflect grants that we anticipate being awarded in the new fiscal year. This includes both an environmental enhancement mitigation grant from the state of California, which has been awarded but is not official yet, and an additional mitigation grant from the Federal Aviation Administration. (Cough) Excuse me. Although the budget reflects 150,000 plus of expenses over revenues, payroll costs charged to the almost 18 million in open grants that we will have are expected to offset more than two-thirds of that. And that's kind of an annual thing as we get our grants and our payroll is charged when BACRA staff work on those grants. And I'm more than willing to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Yes, hi Susan. Thanks for that report. So you're anticipating a $50,000 deficit as a result of the lost carrier and then Pan-Air starting hopefully before that, but September 15th. And it's 150,000. Could you just, total deficit, could you just address the difference of 100,000 in anticipated deficit?
Certainly. On the complete amount, it's showing all of our grants without any of the administrative charges in there that BACRA provides. So there's that portion. There's 35,000 that is on two of our grants, which are older grants. We don't have any matching funds for or any loan against. So that's 35,000 of them. There are certain expenses that are ongoing at the airport that are required due to the maintenance this year. For example, we have, I believe it's 18,000 in fuel tank maintenance. So all of that adds up to it. Every year when we have the grants, it will show that we're going to have expenses over revenues, but just as this current year had a huge swing because of the BACRA administrative, because also sometimes we have to spend money before we get the grant and get it reimbursed. This year ended up that we're actually going to have revenues over expenses, although that's not the way it was budgeted at the beginning of the year. It all has to do with when we can put our grants into the package and reflect those and we can't do that until we actually have them awarded. Does that explain it for you?
Yes, that explains it. Thanks for that explanation.
You bet.
You might also point out that it's a condition of the agreement, the JPA agreement, that all participating agencies approve the budget.
Exactly.
But that this is not funded entirely by the Board of Supervisors or the budget.
Absolutely. As it says in the budget memo that you have, Article IV under funding of the JPA agreement requires that a participant contributing funds to the authority pursuant to or in support of that budget must approve the budget before it's considered final. And that's why annually we bring this budget to you.
Thank you. Can I get a motion? Go ahead.
Just one question on the, on the turn down that we know we're having on the inplanements and the deplanements. How is that going to affect the, are you going to make the numbers for that threshold to get the grant, the million dollar operating budget?
That would affect our 2017 budget and we are currently still exploring that with the FAA. We are not going to likely have the 10,000 inplanements that are needed, but because this is a one-year drop and there are circumstances that created that, none of our making, we're still hoping that we can work something out. So I don't have a solid yes or no for you on that.
Okay, because maybe the Board of Supervisors might, when time comes, to make sure that Congressman Huffman is aware of it and that we could possibly have a waiver for that year because of the change in carrier.
That would be, that's an excellent suggestion. Thank you.
Thanks.
And there were some other funds there, I think that we talked about shifting, from the FAA or whether it was for the EAS monies or penalties or whatnot, so.
Right.
So can I get a motion to approve the?
Motion to approve.
And it's been moved in second. Public comment, any public comment on this budget, the airport budget? Back to the board and poll a vote, please.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Finnegan?
Yes, and that'll take us to 26, which is to consider and approve the proposed special aviation budget.
Okay. So this is, oh, both Ward and Macbeth Fields that BACRA manages for the county. These budgets do reflect receipt of the cap funds, the California Aid to Airports program that brings in $10,000 for each airport annually that we use to, in large part, pay the insurance for those airports and then any maintenance that we have to do and BACRA administrative charges. At this time, it does appear that those cap funds will be available for next year. They have been for the past few. And any questions?
Can I get a motion to approve the proposed special aviation budget?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. And public comment. Okay, again, as you said, this is for Ward Field and Macbeth Field. $10,000 apiece.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Poll a vote, please.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Chair Finnegan?
Yes.
Thank you, supervisor.
Thank you. Good work. And then also, item 29 is to authorize the airport directors sign an amendment between the State of California Department of Transportation, which is Caltrans, and the County of Del Norte for Project 211, well, dash one, the obstruction clearance. Matt, welcome.
Correct. So as you stated.
Would you do me a favor and for the TV audience, identify yourself.
I just realized that. I apologize. Matthew Leitner, Airports Director, Border Coast Regional Airport Authority. As the memo states, we have begun work for the obstruction clearance at Ward. The state has offered us an extension of two years because we anticipate the work will proceed slowly as it has. Thus far, there's been a lot of favorable comment and interest in this project. Those who've had trees removed or topped have been pleased with the work that's been performed, so we ask that you authorize me to go ahead and sign the extension with Caltrans to reflect the new date of February 11th, 2017.
Good. Questions? Can I get a motion on this, please?
Moved to approve.
And is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Public comment on this? This is the first time we've talked about any type of management out there that, yes, we haven't been inundated, but.
That means things are moving.
They are, and it may be germane to note that we did have our Caltrans inspection there last week and we did make our 20 to 1 approach slope on the west side of the runway because of this project, so our letter's going to reflect that and actually an email from our inspector, so we're making considerable progress.
Excellent. That is considerable progress. Other board comment? No public comment? Poll a vote, please.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Chair Finnegan?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, supervisors. I appreciate it.
Good day for the airport. Let's go back to item number 26, which is to authorize CDD staff to request $45,000 in RSTP funds, the Regional Surface Transportation Program funds from Del Norte Local Transportation Commission. Anybody here to speak to us on that? CDD? I hear footsteps. All right, well, we will, hopefully they heard that we want them here, so we will back up just a bit and go to budget transfers. Can I get a motion on the budget transfers, please?
Motion to approve.
Can I get a second? It's been moved and seconded to approve the budget transfers and that's item number 20 and 21 on the agenda. Public comment? Poll a vote, please.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Finnegan?
Yes. Well, looks like we're a little bit ahead of where I thought we would be. So rather than taking up the budget at this time, which I expect a lengthy discussion, let's go ahead and start with supervisors' report outs. We'll do some now and some later. No, we won't. We will go to CDD. So we're going to take up item number 26, which is to authorize CDD staff to request that $45,000 from.
Sorry for being late.
No, 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 that's fine.
As part of some work that the local transportation commission, excuse me, catch my breath, I ran.
You did run.
It's scary. Okay. We are looking to request $45,000 for a three-year period to do some pedestrian improvements within one-half mile of Best Maxwell School and.
This is a three-year program?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions from members of the board? Can I get a motion?
Because didn't we apply for our block grant money for Best Maxwell?
Yes, those are going to be for more infrastructure-related improvements.
Okay.
Sidewalks, signs, those types of things. This will be striping.
Okay.
Primarily vegetation removal.
Thanks.
I move to authorize CDD staff to request $45,000 in RSTP funds from the Del Norte Local Transportation Commission.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any public comment on this? Not to be confused with CDBG grants or anything else, just another pot of money to help do the job. Good work. Poll a vote, please.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Chair Finnegan?
Yes. So we'll go take a couple of minutes' worth of reports. And Supervisor Gitlin, you want to start?
Yes, thank you. After our board meeting two weeks ago, I attended our monthly Visitors Bureau meeting where the finishing touches are being approved by the Del Norte Crescent City Visitors Bureau for rack card brochures, which have already been distributed to the scores of high visitor population across the North State and the Northwest, so good job there. Two Saturdays passed, Angela and I paid our respects to John and Debbie Thompson. Trees mystery and remembering John's mother, Mary Lee Smith, who passed away, age 93. The remembrance was held at the Forest Cafe and as you, one might imagine, there was a great deal of many interesting stories about this fascinating woman. Just prior to heading down to Klamath for Mary Lee's service, Take a Bite Out of Light conducted another cleanup we do this weekly at Battery Point Lighthouse, all the way to the pool. Volunteers every Saturday meet at the lighthouse parking lot and scour Howe Drive until the rocks, removing litter and even the smallest of debris, including what appears to be an unending sea of cigarette butts. For those of you who smoke, requests is made, please don't discard your cigarette along this iconic part of Del Norte County. It's easy to toss it in the omnipresent trashcans. Last week, Lions Club met to discuss its July 5th, day after Independence Day cleanup among the barbecue pits at Battery Point. Volunteers are sought to participate in what is about an hour-long event, cleanup, to remove spent fireworks litter. And we're meeting at 10:00 AM at Battery Point Parking Lot. Call my office if you wish to volunteer. Attending the grand opening of the new location of the Wild Rivers Foundation also, I had to excuse myself for the Redwood Coast Transit Authority meeting where Joe Alioto was appointed as the Authority's newest at-large commissioner. Thursday last, the Point of Honor Monument Committee met to discuss ongoing plans for the S-Curve monument. Nothing additional to report at this time. Last night, LAFCO met and discussed and continued this discussion on the South County Community Service District. The Uruk tribe will play a significant role in providing vital fire protection services in remote Klamath. Also, the professional service contract to executive officer George Williamson was extended for another year at no increase. And finally, the Del Norte Solid Waste Management Authority met its monthly meeting last week. Among the items we discussed were two that attracted a considerable amount of attention. Number one was the approval of the job description and the overall package offered to the acting director, Ted Ward. The Authority voted to skip Mr. Ward two full steps to Level E, even after he received a 5% increase during the 20 months he was acting director and program director. The new director was offered a 15% increase immediately and will receive a step increase to Level F for next year, 2016. On that basis alone, I would question, should the board consider offering 15% increases to all county employees, since no employee's been offered any raise in years other than step increases? It's a slippery slope the Authority has embarked upon, so I voted no because the protocol usurps all other county directors who work no less equally hard under very trying circumstances. Also, the Authority changed the protocol for dismissal of the director without cause to garnering at least four affirmative votes, changing from the existing three or simple majority. Again, the agency is now operating in unique governmental territory, different and separate from any other county department. And finally, number two, I voted no on a 1 to 4 vote to approve the new director as he has limited, if any, financial experience and essentially is learning on the job. If no one else, I will stand as the adult in the room when it comes to minding the piggy bank at this troubled authority. Missing funds notwithstanding, there's been no change in hiring a director who has financial experience and know-how to avoid a repeat of missing public funds. And that's my report.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes, thank you. I'll keep this relatively brief. Couple of weeks ago, Supervisor Howard and I traversed to Mammoth Lakes, California, which is impossible to get to from here.[1382.86][1382.86](Laughter). Anyway, discussion of the Blue Creek closure. Supervisor Howard presented information on the economic impacts while I stuck to the policy issues that the Fish and Game Commission themselves did not follow. And these are their own policies. So I'll let Supervisor Howard elaborate on that later if he wants. Had a local transportation commission meeting, had a resource conservation district meeting, went to the Wild Rivers ribbon cutting and later reception. The ribbon cutting was for their new building, which is the old Frasier Yammer Building. Very nice presentation there and the reception was at the Cultural Center. As Supervisor Gitlin said, we had a local area formation commission meeting yesterday late afternoon. And on a lighter note, ex-supervisor Sullivan was married last Saturday. I attended that wedding in Napa, California. It was very nice. He seemed to be very happy. Also, had many, many calls about the Grand Jury Report, which I thought was relatively inadequate, the, some of the articles or some of the things that they studied, I don't think would make a good op-ed article in the newspaper. That's it for me.
Okay. County Council, you want to report out of closed session, please?
No reportable action this morning.
Okay. So it is 10:25, so at this time we have public comment. Any member of the public can address the board on any item either on or off the agenda. If you want, you can comment both times, but if not, you might want to hold until we bring that up. Public comment, please. Who's first? Please. And just identify yourself for the record and try to keep your comments to three minutes, please.
Yes, Helen Ferguson, and I'm here today to represent Legal Grange. We had our monthly meeting last Tuesday and we had a little over 100 of our members in attendance and they asked me to extend our appreciation for allowing us to be in the coordination process with the travel management plan with the Forest Service. They also wanted to know what they could do to help in the future with any coordination processes with state and federal agencies. I brought here today about, right at 300, maybe a little more, letters of support for the coordination process, as well as letters from people, individual people. And our organization is committed to having our local citizens, property owners, and local elected officials have an equal voice in all plans proposed. And the basic message we want to give is that we walk the walk every day in our county and we deserve to talk the talk when it comes to planning. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yeah.
My name's Thomas Stratton. I am the new 4-H representative for Humboldt and Del Norte Counties and I currently reside in Ferndale, California, as part of a small dairy that sends milk up here to Rumiano. And I'm really excited to be here in Northern California, originally from Eastern Oregon. And getting to know this community has been quite the thrill, as well as in Humboldt. I didn't know I was supposed to speak earlier if that was appropriate time, but I just wanted to let you know that I'm here. I'm a new face and I definitely would like to meet with as many people that have some influence and those that have concerns and suggestions for the 4-H program. I'm a fourth-generation 4-H family and really looking forward to administering the program here in Del Norte as well as Humboldt, making lots of changes and hopefully you see those reflected digitally so we have a lot more presence on the web, as well as presence in this community. I'm up here once a week, generally on Tuesdays.
Welcome.
Thanks.
Welcome. Fantastic. Good. I'm going to go ahead and continue with supervisors'. Oh, more?
Two comments and then I have to leave. One is the.
Identify yourself, please, for the record.
Pardon?
Could you please identify yourself for the record?
Victoria Dickie, I am in your district.
And I know who you are, but the public doesn't. Thank you.
Well, maybe better not. The Alcar problem, I'm hoping you're going to do something to deal with it. I don't know exactly what your plans are, but they cost all of us out in the county a lot of money. The second point that I want to make is I believe that when you hire individuals to high-end jobs, they should at least have to apply for them. It should be set out to the community. We should advertise for the best available. Several times I've seen people approved just because they happen to be in the right place at the right time and that isn't necessarily the best for the community. So if you have not formally approved this latest appointment to the Solid Waste Authority, well, Ted Ward, let's get real. If you haven't formally appointed him and agreed to that, I would suggest that you open that whole thing up so that we can get the best available, not just someone who happens to have been sitting there. Thank you.
Thank you. And just for a point of clarification, this board is not the appointing authority for the Solid Waste Director.
You don't have authority to approve it?
Not that I'm aware of it. That is under the purview, personnel decisions for Solid Waste is under the purview of the Solid Waste Board.
Are you not the one who pays his salary?
No, we are not.
You don't do any of that?
No. In fact, if you had listened to the. In fact, if you had listened to the, and I'm sure you did, to the last meeting, I believe we did the budget.
No, I was not able to come until this meeting.
We reviewed the budget of the Solid Waste Management Authority, and at what times there were comments by several individuals, including myself, that it did lack transparency on the hiring process.
Yes.
Okay. But that was input, but that's it.
That's it. You might consider either changing that provision or withdrawing.
It's the Solid Waste Management.
I know, but that's underneath the joint powers agreement, right? Just a thought. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Nope? Okay, then let's go to the 10:30. Let's re, having updates from the Forest Service from the District Ranger Dave Palmer. Welcome.
Thank you. Dave Palmer, District Ranger, Smith River NRA. So, once again, thank you for having me down. I've been trying to get you all on my calendar every month, so I've got to block out some time in advance. So I actually have some new information this go-around. So I thought I'd just start with an update of the Buckskin Fire. Currently, and this is the fire that's up on the Rogue River Siski, just north of the Gasky Ranger District. Currently, it's about 5,000 acres. Crews will continue their burnout operations today along the southern flank. Containment right now stands at about 45%. The other crews will continue to mop up and patrol. But over the next couple of days, they're expecting some triple-digit temperatures, so they'll have to keep an eye on the fuels inside, and we'll see how that one goes. And then earlier this month, we had a number of lightning fires on the district up there. The largest was the Devil Fire. It was about 21 acres, and I'm bringing this up because the fire activity was what we would expect to find in August. So fuel conditions out there are very dry, and I would just ask the public to be safe out there and watch out for fires. We did sign the Gordon decision, so finally we can start implementing. We have crews out there right now finishing up some of the boundary marking. Then we can get a contract to actually get out there and do some stand exams and mark the timber and then put that up for bid probably in the fall.
Dave, would you explain exactly where that is, the Gordon?
The Gordon Project is between Big Flat and the Town of Gasky. It's the main corridor, which is like the secondary exit from Big Flat. So this project will help tie an earlier Big Flat fuels reduction project and the Gasky fuels reduction projects together, so give a safer corridor if anybody has to leave the area. And it's been five years, so it's good to get it done. And then we could start a new one. Travel management continues. Another one of our 10-year projects. Right now, we're looking at a decision probably in the fall. They were shooting for the end of the summer, but we got a new NEPA Coordinator, and she's taken a set of fresh eyes on it and picking out stuff for us to fix. So hopefully in the fall, we'll get that one done. Been talking with Lynn Wright. She's our RAC Coordinator, and right now she is working with the RAC to set up a meeting in September. I'm new to RAC, but apparently there's some legal notifications you got to put out there before you can meet. She is trying to work with the RAC to get permission to put a legal notice in the paper now for new proposals. So they will be taking new proposals, and my understanding this time around is that we have some time, so upwards of like a year to discuss projects. Big Flat, the project I mentioned earlier, we had a contractor out there finishing some hand piling work. There is a lot of good firewood to be collected, so it's all along the Ship Mountain Road. And my understanding there, you know, four-foot lengths of firewood that you can just pick up from the road. So that kind of ties in, helps us with our objective to reduce fuels out there.
Do you need any kind of a permit for that?
You do need a firewood permit. You can buy them at the district office, and I've actually worked with our law enforcement officer and let him know that that area is open for firewood, and so nobody will be bothered as long as you have a permit. I think that's about it. So, you know, some new information, and we'll continue working on travel management, and hopefully the fire season will be quiet like last year.
Any questions?
Yeah, I do have some questions, Dave. Thank you so much for coming. I really appreciate this. I know you're probably busy with the fires that are going on and looking out, so I really appreciate you coming in, and hopefully you'll continue to do that. Getting back to travel management, you said that we have a new person that's taking a look at different things?
Yeah, we hired a new NEPA Coordinator. Her name's Carol Spinos, and she comes over from the Plumas. So she's overseeing all of our NEPA projects now, and so she's throwing a fresh set of eyes on it.
Okay.
You know, making sure that we're meeting all of our legal requirements and stuff.
So is this something that we need to meet with her on, or should we have something so we know what direction she's going? Are there going to be significant changes, you think?
I don't suspect, you know, I think it's, she's just little fixes. You know, definitely we could maybe get her up here to present to the Board.
I would appreciate that. That'd be good. And I do appreciate your, the Buckskin updates that I get from you by email.
Okay, yeah, I was wondering, I gave them all your emails, so.
Yeah.
And, you know, and I was trying earlier to keep updates too, but my computer went down, so I haven't sent out any in a month or a couple of weeks, I think.
And the Gordon Hill Project, how many million board feet, or is there, are we getting to a million?
Estimated at 4 million board feet. You know, the commercial thin portion of that is approximately 660 acres. There's some sugar pine restoration of 20 acres in fuel reduction treatments, hand piling and such of about 1,100 acres. So, yeah, about, they're estimating about 4 million board feet.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
David, again, thanks for coming and filling us in. I, too, am getting your almost hourly reports on Buckskin. You know, I'm continuing to get so many calls from constituents and wonder why the forest is not being culled down more aggressively. So we have these forest fires, which are predictable this day follows night, and the great manpower deployments, great deal of money. We're in a water shortage, as you know. I sit on AQMD, we're here, the foul end of the air. Why isn't there more aggressive culling down of your forest, which represents a significantly large percentage of territory here in Delnort County? It seems to be very modest and limited. Plus, there's the option of biomass, which can be exploited, and it is not. So could you address that, and if not this season, for future seasons? Because clearly there doesn't seem to be enough proper forest management to perhaps prevent some of these huge fires, and maybe that should be reconsidered and evaluated.
Yeah, definitely, you know, Merv George, our new Forest Supervisor, is looking at ramping up our fuels reduction programs. Regional direction is coming down to ramp it up. You know, we've got a big project over in the Orleans area where there's a lot of effort being put into. Now that Gordon's out of the way, we'll be looking for more projects over here, and I'm looking for bigger footprints. You know, Gordon was about 2,000 acres. I'm looking to treat more areas because we do have a huge fuel loading out there, and we do need to, you know, keep up the pressure not only on the forest but the region to get the go-ahead to actually treat some of these and maybe get some NEPA out in a timely fashion so that it doesn't take five years between projects. But definitely, Merv has made it his priority, because he always addresses it, of reducing fuels on the forest. And so I would think we're going to get better direction and more projects, and we'll definitely be pushing for more projects up here in Delnort.
Any other questions? Supervisor Howard?
The stand age, first off, backing up, you said 2,000 acres, but before you said 660. I'm trying to understand the difference in the stand acreages.
On the acres?
For Gordon Project.
So, commercial thinning's about 660 acres for Gordon. And then the fuel reduction treatment is basically hand piling.
Okay.
And that's the, you know, 1,100-plus acres.
So, commercial thinning, you mean somebody's coming in?
They'll actually come in and reduce the use of the canopy down to 40 to 60%.
Where's the standing timber going after it's reduced?
It will go to whoever bids on it locally, probably a local mill. The one in Brookings or maybe the one up there in O'Brien.
So the stand age averages?
It's all over the place. You know, a lot of it's the old plantations that were put in 60, 70 years ago, and they're due to be thinned out.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions?
This is up on the South Fork, right?
Yeah, actually, well, you go up French Hill Road, and you know where it comes out, down by Dry Lake and then into Big Flat. It's all along that area.
I know, I was back on the road on the South Fork, and I just want to tell you that it was a beautiful job that, of the thinning that was happening and the brush clearance.
Oh, on the Big Flat?
The Big, yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
It was incredible.
You know, and the public really helped us on that one because we opened that up to firewood, and they went in and just cleaned it up beautiful.
Yeah, it was.
Dave, thank you, as always. Appreciate keeping in touch with us. We're not used to that, and we really appreciate it. Thank you very, very much.
Oh, yeah, definitely, and we'll see you next month.
Yes, you will.
I'm going to stay around for the elk discussion.
Good.
You don't have any, do you?
Seeing that's the problem. But anyway, let's go back to Supervisor Reports. Supervisor McClure.
Yes, I, between our last meeting, I traveled to the Coastal Commission meeting, and the appeal that was filed for Humboldt State for their maintenance facility was worked out and it was withdrawn, and then it was approved without any, without any problems. So Humboldt was able to move forward on a pretty significant project. I also had the opportunity to, my granddaughter's here, so I've been showing her all over the county, and I was surprised at the, there seems to be an increase in the number of abandoned trailers and abandoned stuff out at Pacific Shores. She's of the age of learning to drive, so we went real slow all through there, so I can tell you that there's, it seems to have increased. And then yesterday on Highway 197, there appears to be a large recreational vehicle that has been abandoned right across the street from the golf course. So we probably should try to get those taken care of since it's the beginning of our tourist season, and it seemed a little amiss. I also was able to have a meeting with our Director of Social Services and the Commander of the Highway Patrol to talk about a discussion to have intervention response teams in our community and to try to get the dialogue going on what do we need to do, you know? And one of the issues was to identify the amount of money that we, as a community, are currently spending on those less fortunate in the community, and how could we better direct those dollars? And so to just keep data on how many contacts are there? Because our Sheriff's Office, our Social Services, and our police services, from, all the way from CHP to State and National Parks, have interactions that end up in the long run costing money for the community, where we then just kind of cycle people rather than try to figure a solution and come up with a plan. So to start the discussion of what we're going to do, how are we going to assist the less fortunate in our community? I attended Solid Waste, and I attended the Solid Waste Agenda Review, and I still am trying to, I would still like to see the Board of Supervisors take a look at Airbnbs and vacation rentals on what do we want those to, what information do we want to glean from those, or what regulations do we want, if we want any? But I believe that we need to take a look at it because we're getting, there's about 25 now on, between A Street and Pebble Beach alone. And I'm just wanting to make sure we're collecting our TOT, that we have emergency plans, that we, we should be taking a look at it, is my position, and I don't know what it's going to look like. And then I would like to end with, by going back into the back country and going off onto some of the roads, I just want to commend the Road Department for an excellent job that they do because those gravel roads are, there's some of them that are just absolutely great, and I wish that the Forest Service could have as good of a team as that we have with our Road Department because they're doing a stellar job with not very much money. Thank you.
Thank you. Which takes us to 10:45, so we're going to go ahead, no, no, your presentation by Eric Loft, Department of Fish and Wildlife regarding elk management plans for Delnort County. Welcome, Eric.
Thank you, Chairman Finnegan. My name is Eric Loft, and I'm the Chief Wildlife for the California Department of Fishing Wildlife now, not Fish and Game. It's hard for some of us who've been around a long time still to remember that. I appreciate the invitation from Supervisor Gitlin several months ago, and actually apologize for how long it's taken for us to get here as a group. With me is Joe Hobbs, our statewide elk coordinator, Richard Callis, our Northern Region Supervisor, and of course, I think many of you know David Lancaster, who's our local underground biologist. And I wanted to start off by just kind of introduction and then ask Joe to give a brief overview PowerPoint of where we're going and where we've been with elk 2015 and then 2016. But I would tell you also that we hear you loud and clear in Sacramento and also up here in the regional office, that there is a chronic problem here. I think you have both the good and the bad, and that you're at the forefront of this here in Delnort County. The good is that you're at the forefront, and then we're going to ask you to help us figure out how to fix this, both through the county as well as local landowners. The bad, of course, is that you're kind of the first ones experiencing these problems in a more significant way. We have had chronic, not chronic, but elk problems over the years in certain areas of the state, but they've been very limited, occasional elk here and there, not what we're seeing now with growing populations of elk in several places of the state where we clearly in the department need to come up with a better solution for how we're going to deal with this long-term. So that's why I say it's good to do. I'd also acknowledge that we received a letter from your County Council this past week on, taking us to task on our elk management plan. Elk management plan isn't developed in the department. We're not ready to even contend with it ourselves, so we're not really ready to get it out there for the public review. But please don't think that anybody here is, won't have a chance to participate in the development of our elk management strategy. It's a statewide strategy. Once we get that out, Joe will talk about that a little bit as well. Have plenty of time for public input and seek input on how to develop that and how to implement that plan. Implement that plan, excuse me. I went to Mammoth, too, and picked up a cold a couple of weeks ago, and my voice still has not recovered, and I agree with the Supervisors that getting from Mammoth to here and back, what a trip. I can't imagine that. And anyway, I would also say thanks to our federal partners here. I agree with some of the sentiment that I heard there real quick. We love to get Forest Service involved, certainly National Park Service, State Parks. Elk are an important resource to a lot of folks. So with that, I would just quickly turn it over to Joe to kind of give an overview. I will tell you, too, at the start of this, what we would like to do going forward is start a dialogue, really, to try to figure out what are the solutions and how can we work collectively. There will be a Fish and Game, statewide Fish and Game Commission meeting in Fortuna in early August, and in and around that date, we'd be glad to, you know, come up before or after that if folks want to get together and just formally get into a meeting and start discussing these issues a little more in-depth. I think you have a commitment from the group of four of us here, Karen Kovacs, who's the Program Manager for the Northern Regions, and Neil Mangi, who's the Regional Manager, and certainly our Director is aware of this topic and is looking forward to us to try to smooth it out and resolve it. So with that, I'll give it to Joe real quick.
Good morning. My name is Joe Hobbs. I'm the statewide elk and animal coordinator for the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. You can see on the board, kind of a brief overview, the lower map has a historical distribution of Roosevelt elk identified in red, you know, all the way over into Siskiyou County, Delnort, Humboldt. you know, all the way over into Siskiyou County, Del Norte, Humboldt County, and down in a little bit portion of Mendocino County. And the map on the right, the, the blue is the current distribution of Roosevelt elk. Um, that's not a filled-in distribution, there are patchy throughout that range, so, but that's the overall extent of the Roosevelt elk. And a little bit of red in the upper corner is the elk distribution for Roosevelt by, by about eighteen seventy. They're only found in a few remnant herds in Del Norte and Humboldt Counties. So the department, um, has done releases to reestablish Roosevelt elk within California. Uh, some of the re, releases between nineteen forty-seven and nineteen sixty-five, there were two releases of fifty elk into Bear Basin in Del Norte County. In the early eighties, there were twenty-four elk moved to the Kings Range of, uh, Humboldt County. And also with that same area in nineteen eighty, uh, elk were put in the Kings Range and portions of Siskiyou and Trinity County as well. Uh, you know, elk besides the relocation attempts that the department has done, have also moved on their own. They've come from, oops, portions from Oregon and the remnant populations within California as well as from the reestablished herds within California. Elk are very capable of moving long distances, and they'll find the areas, as you guys know, that they like and set up shop there. Uh, estimating elk populations is not an easy task in a lot of portions of the state. Heavy timber, not good visibility, it's really hard to get accurate information. Um, the department has some limited survey data for the North Coast. We realize it's likely underestimating the total number of elk present, we know we can't count them all. And some of the counts that we've done over the years, you know, anywhere from, you know, low one hundred up to over four hundred and thirty elk approximately. But working with the unit biologists, you know, we estimate that there's about sixteen hundred elk total in Humboldt and Del Norte Counties. You know, elk are a unique species, but they have their management challenges, you know, and that management challenge is exaggerated on private lands. Some of those challenges are, they do conflict with property uses, you know, not everybody loves elk, um, so we realize that. You know, one of the things that we're trying to do to get a handle on things is to get a good population estimate so we can make management decisions that, you know, accurately reflect what's going on on the ground. And again, just like on the public properties, you know, estimating those herd sizes can be very difficult. You know, one of the tools the department uses, you know, for management of elk is hunting. Uh, getting access for those hunters on private land also has its unique challenges. And there's also a diverse demand by the general public, you know, from public viewing to hunting to preservation, reduction, elimination. You know, all those views are expressed, um, for elk throughout portions of California. Uh, for the hunting aspect, there's a huge demand for public tags. This year, we issued about three hundred and fifty tags through the general draw system, and there were over thirty-four thousand applications for those tags. So the department does try to work for options for landowners. We have various types of elk tags, we have the general elk tags, the private lands management elk tags, landowner elk tags, and this year, the new is the share elk tags, and I'll kind of talk about that in a little bit. So historically, uh, since nineteen sixty-three, there's been over eighteen hundred elk tags issued, you know, on the North Coast. Uh, this year, there were fifty-four elk tags in the Northwest Zone, which is portions of, uh, or all Del Norte and portions of Humboldt County. And those are general landowner elk tags. This is the maximum that we can issue underneath the elk environmental document. So that's, that's right now, that's where we're at, we can't issue any more, uh, for that. If you compare that, in two thousand and five, there were seventeen tags available for elk in Del Norte County. In addition to those fifty-four tags, uh, there'll be nine PLM or Private Lands Management Tags in Del Norte County in two thousand and fifteen. You know, elk, the next thing that comes up usually is depredation. What the usually depredation protocol is, the landowner will contact the department, um, and then they'll send out the local biologist to, to meet with the landowner. And there are some things in the Fishing Game Code that the department must do with depredation. So first, the unit biologist must verify the damage, the extent of damage, and if it was actually caused by elk, you know, most of the times, it's, it's pretty obvious whether it was or wasn't. And then at that point, the department must provide written corrective measures necessary to alleviate the problem and give those to the landowners. After that, the department must determine the viability of the local herd and the population's level needed to sustain that or maintain that herd. And if permits are issued, they can't reduce that population below the minimum identified in that. And then also within the code is to work with landowners to try to achieve long-term resolutions. This is the only way it's really gonna be successful long-term is to come up with ideas or management actions that help do that. It's depredation. Uh, typically, the department has not issued elk for eating grass in established pastures. What the department has done is issue permits for such things as fence damage, row crops, and injury to livestock. And this is on a statewide basis, not only here on the coast. Uh, the, the depredation can provide immediate relief, but it rarely provides a long-term solution. So it can be used as a tool in conjunction with other management actions to try to get a handle on the elk situation. Uh, so I talked about the shared tags, and the shared is a department's program for Shared Habitat Alliance for Recreational Enhancement. It's basically a private lands access that the landowners compensated, uh, for recreational activities. This year, the department wrote regulations to get passed through the Fishing Game Commission. It establishes special tags that we can issue for individual properties. It's still underneath the environmental document for the total tag range that we can do for each zone. But with these shared tags, uh, they're valid on individual properties. Uh, they're issued to the general public by drawing, public pays an application fee. That money from the application fees is used to pay landowners for allowing the hunting access. And the state assumes a liability for these activities, which for a lot of landowners is a huge deal. It wasn't so much the financial cost, but the liability issues, you know, by owning property. And so with that's, that's a huge thing that is covered under the share. And also with the shared tags, we have a little bit more flexibility on the season dates. Uh, we can issue those for a broader range. Some properties don't have elk on them during the general season, they may come in later, uh, migratory elk. So we have that flexibility with the new share, share tags. So, right now, Eric kind of mentioned it, um, the statewide elk management plan is being reviewed by upper management. Once they give me their comments back, um, I will incorporate those into the plan, make those public, uh, for available this summer and fall, and then hope to have it, uh, completed by the winter of two thousand and fifteen. That is the goal, to have the plan finalized after public, uh, input. In conjunction with the state management plan, I'm working on the elk environmental document. The last document we have was dated two thousand and ten. The document basically allows us to establish hunting regulations for elk. Um, so in this plan, we can change season dates, subdivide zones, um, lengthen hunting seasons, basically try to target areas where we're having elk issues and have the hunters basically go there and help alleviate those damage for the, the conflicts that are being addressed. So some areas we want more elk, other areas we don't. Even though the zone may be huge or the management unit, there are localized areas where we think, you know, hey, this is either too many elk or just the right amount of elk, and targeting those areas to maintain that at a reasonable level. And, uh, that will go to draft for public comment in September. This is through the State Fishing Game Commission process, and after their review and evaluation, uh, it'll be adopted in April two thousand and sixteen. Uh, so the next steps, you know, we want to work with local landowners to reduce conflicts with elk as much as possible and come up with, you know, ideas, I'm always open to new solutions. Um, you know, part of that with the environmental document, you know, hunting is a big thing that we can reduce and control elk populations in many areas, while still meeting other public needs. The department will issue depredation permits where appropriate. Community outreach is always important. And then we want to meet with stakeholders, you know, to minimize conflicts with elk. You know, Eric mentioned that the department's gonna be up here in early August. We'd love to set up a meeting, you know, and try to discuss the issues in more detail with local landowners and stakeholders. And also, we have paperwork going through now to get two additional employees to work specifically on elk in Region One, which is the northern part of California, and one of those peoples will be signed here on the North Coast. And that's a huge thing for the department, to have dedicated employees, they're permanent intermittent, but to work specifically on elk issues and try to get a better handle on the numbers, distribution, you know, and where they're migrating or, or going through, to, throughout the year. So to try to kind of summarize it, you know, the department, I think, is working to provide options for landowners with, that have elk concerns. You know, we still want to maintain on the elk, on the landscape, you know, the level of that may, you know, fluctuate or be different than some people want or don't want. Uh, but there are multiple stakeholders, like I mentioned earlier, and all the stakeholders have input into elk, how elk are managed within California. So that's kind of it in a, in a nutshell, and be more than happy to try to answer any questions as well.
First, I want to thank you and Eric both for, for showing up, and I, I want to be clear on something. I'm sure that you mentioned Supervisor Gitlin, and I know there's been other supervisors that have contacted you. I also know that there was a concerted effort, as directed as it should be, through the Chair of the Board of Supervisors and the administration in trying to set this up, and that's why it took so long, because the right people weren't there. Um, so in going forward, when you do hear, we talk amongst ourselves as well, but when you do hear from individual supervisors, would you make sure that your answers are responded to the entire board through the CAO so we don't get caught up in this thing as we've run into with other agencies? Well, I talk to so-and-so, uh, well, so-and-so doesn't speak for the board all the time. So, if we could do that, that'd be great. Um, I know that we have comments from supervisors, I know we're gonna have a lot of comments from the public, but let's start with the supervisors.
Yep.
And first of all, thank you for, for finally showing up. Who goes first here? Supervisor Gitlin?
Well, again, Dr. Loff and, uh, Joe, nice to meet you, and I appreciate your coming here, and thank you for responding to our outreach at no time, without acting unilaterally. I am besieged, here I am in a city district besieged by no shortage of people who are very concerned about how this is impacting their life, these ranchers and dairy farmers that are, that are impacted. So, we're bringing this to the attention of our Board of Supervisors, and I know, Dr. Loff and Joe, you're very busy, you're out of a different area. So, thank you for making the time to come up. I had a couple of questions, since we don't know the population of elk. I've heard estimates from sixteen hundred, which you're mentioning now, upwards of twenty-five hundred. But we do know the population of problems caused by elk, because those come into our office, and they're growing. There are fence problems and loss of, um, of, of, of eating supplies for the dairy animals. So these are coming down very strong on the individual property owner. And their request, uh, at least to you directly, has been to increase the amount of depredation permits, and that's been summarily rejected. So I'm wondering, who is in charge of managing this growing population of problems? Since we don't know what the denominator is, how many elk there are, but we do know that the numerator is we're having more problems. And now that we have an answer, that you'll have, um, a statewide elk management plan, uh, available to us, we've been asking for that for a long time, and that will be done hopefully in the winters, what I'm understanding from you. So, the other instance which I want to bring to everyone's attention is we're in the peak travel season right now. We have a lot of visitors coming up. I read this morning, visitor population, uh, is increasing, it's forty percent increase since twenty-ten. There are a lot of close calls on our highways coming up into Del Norte County. I know personally, I've had a number of close calls, and driving in the dusk hours, I am creeping up Highway one oh-one as I enter Del Norte County to make sure that something doesn't pop out of the bush and, uh, make, uh, an unintended collision with my vehicle. And I know that has to be, I don't see Lieutenant Toma here, but I've asked him for some, uh, data on the amount of increase of accidents caused by these migratory animals. So these are all, uh, these are all aspects that I would hope that you, as a, an entity, would address and find solutions for, so there isn't more havoc. And I thank you both for coming up here.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes, uh, again, thank you both for, for showing up, I really appreciate it. Um, I have a couple of concerns, and that's a statewide management plan. Um, we live in an area where one size does not fit all. And so we would like to see more of a regional approach, I think, um, which, uh, brings up another point of coordination with, uh, with the local governments. Uh, we'd like to be part of this plan, we'd like to, we'd like to see what you've got going, we'd like to see where you're going with it so that we can have early input, uh, and, and be able to make, uh, maybe make some changes early on before this goes out to the public, so we'd like to see that happen. Those are, those are my main concerns, uh, this, uh, you know, there, we have a lot of public lands around that, uh, that might be nice habitat, uh, for elk. Uh, we'd like to see them maybe move off of private, private lands and, and get them more onto public lands, if that's, if that's at all possible. And, uh, you know, Joe, I, I heard you mention something about loving elk, not, everybody love elk, but I think everybody does in some way love elk, whether that's eating them or shooting them or looking at them. So, in some way, I think we, you know, we all love elk, and we don't, we, we certainly don't want to see the species, uh, be eliminated, uh, but, uh, there, there seems to be, uh, way too many of them in a very small area. And they seem to concentrate on areas where we really don't want them, uh, to be, where they're interfering with, uh, whether it's the dairy farmer or the rancher that's, uh, uh, trying to have their cattle, uh, or cows in the, uh, in their field. And, and, so we'd like to, like I said, we'd like to see some, uh, some, we'd like to have some early input on this.
You know, one of the things I can, uh, tell you is the elk management plan is kind of divided up into two sections. There's the overall view statewide, you know, kind of far-reaching goals, and then there are individual elk management units that discuss, you know, basically more localized issues and possible solutions, you know, or management actions for those. So for the, this area, the Northwest Zone, you know, Humboldt, Del Norte County, has its own individual elk management unit, you know, with those issues, you know, outlined in it. So we can try to, you know, focus those, you know, on that particular area. Again, and there is the other section which is more of a statewide perspective, so.
I guess playing off of what Supervisor Hemmingson said, I think it's great that you're talking to people, and obviously you're talking to individual supervisors as well as constituents. And I, as every supervisor gets calls from constituents, maybe more than some, uh, because we, out in the Birch Track had, uh, has been the battleground as well as out of Valley Road for some of the instances. But going back to the communication, in the own, in your own miscellaneous policies, it talks about cooperation, um, that there will be cooperation with local, state, and federal agencies. We are part of that, uh, as well as all interested persons, groups, and organizations. But then it goes on to say, regarding, uh, your planning, to carry out the purposes of preservation, protection, restoration, et cetera, that it is essential that a comprehensive program be implemented by the department to assure that there will be a dose, uh, be a close coordination with state, federal, and local planning agencies, including boards of supervisors, um, and other entities regarding the formulation implementation of any plan. So it spells out Board of Supervisors, it spells out coordination, and it spells out, um, you know, it's mandated. And I think that was the letter that you probably received regarding Blue Creek, that it didn't happen. But now, we want to get ahead of this with the elk management plan. It's great that you're having internal, but we don't need it to go from staff level to higher staff level to greater staff level and then ask for public input. There's a process here of coordination with boards of supervisors that needs to be part of the formulation of that plan. It doesn't say you have to agree with us, but it does say you have to coordinate with us. And so I'm going forward, hopefully that's in your plans.
Yeah, certainly, Chairman, thank you for that, yes. And on your earlier topic, we will work to coordinate our input back to you through your staff as appropriate. Apologies for any misconceptions on our part, uh, in the past. But, you know, on this topic, yeah, uh, we will go back and take a look at that. And, and I, I think we have nothing to hide, really, in terms of what we're, we're trying to do, and the sooner we can get it out to you and some of the other county folks, uh, in other counties that would be interested in this, the better. But, uh, again, I think as I said, there's, we have not made any decisions yet, and there's no finality to it. Uh, it's just that we're still trying to craft what we think, and we'll give, give that, that out to, to all those other agencies and entities as well as the public. But certainly, uh, based on what you just read to us, yeah, we would hold in higher regard certainly the other agencies, local government officials, et cetera, so.
Inclusiveness would be the word I would use. Supervisor McClure?
Yes, I, I want to echo my fellow supervisor's position of the importance of being included. And, um, it, it's frustrating to know that you're probably sitting on a, I'll just make up a number, a sixty-page document that talks about what elk should be happening, what should be happening to elk in California. And you have a local elected body that is being asked to just hold off, and when, when we get it, we'll, we'll deliver it to you. And to me, that risk the possibility, and probably the likelihood, of you not knowing this community quite as well as people that we would probably put forward to come talk at the table. We probably know it better. In fact, um, recently, the Ocean Protection Council, in part of their management, are actually taking into account not just the science of, um, and, and, of an entity that they're looking at, but they're also looking at the cultural science, what the indigenous people, where they saw elk, what they did with elk, what were the elk's needs, and then the, the pioneer- elk, what they did with elk, what were the elk's needs, and then the pioneering families that were here. So to write a document about what elk should do in California without integrating those elk with the communities in which you're doing it, I'm afraid you're gonna come up with an empty vessel, or you're gonna come up with a program that pits one group against another group, and then everybody's fighting, and you end up in court with, you know, litigation from both sides, rather than sitting down right now and passing this document around to the local electeds and say, "Read this. Tell us if you think that we're close, or if we're not close." Because we probably have information that would be of assistance to you. So I don't mean, I know it's kind of like, you're kind of looking like, okay, the lecture's over, I get it. But it's just so important to try to do management and to do environmental improvements without having everybody at the table. It becomes very, very difficult for us to get our job done. So I do have a couple of questions that, in the update of the elk environmental document, in that you said you had to know the numbers in order to be able to know what the hunts will be, or what the, where we're going. So I'm assuming that that is on a fast track to come out with this document.
Yeah, the numbers that we use for that, you know, are estimations, obviously. And we err on the side of caution for the hunting aspect of it. You know, obviously, we don't want to take a herd down below, like carrying capacity, or not carrying capacity, but just viable.
Right.
So we have estimates for those, base it on that. There's probably more, but, you know, the CEQA, this is our best, you know, estimate of the numbers, and we utilize that. Now, moving forward, you know, better numbers are always, you know, gonna be very, very helpful in establishing hunting regulations. There's no question about that. And that's where we're trying to go, you know, by having a biologist, you know, on the coast, working solely on elk. You know, that is new, and it's a huge bonus for my program, you know, to have that, because I don't have that anywhere else in the state.
And what about the fifty-four tags? That's a locked-in number?
That's the maximum underneath the current environmental document that we're operating under, that was analyzed. That's the CEQA equivalent. So that was the number when we went out for review, you know, and then we went through the commission.
And when was that?
Two thousand and ten.
Okay.
So prior to that, they were done on about a two-year basis, you know, and so we haven't done it since then, obviously. So that's the numbers that we're operating under. That's the maximum I can, you know, authorized by law.
And we don't know if you've increased that, because we haven't been able to see that copy of that environmental document making that recommendation?
I know, what's the?
The numbers, the tag numbers. We don't know if we are, you know, do I need to be advocating to you, oh, look, they're gonna put it to seventy-two tags next year? And then, because we have no information, it makes it very difficult.
Well, yeah, that, I mean, we're just, I'm just starting that process, you know, and that basically starts, as we do to our Fish and Game Commission, in September. And so part of that process, more than willing to sit down, you know, again, when we have our stakeholders meeting, you know, and talk about those numbers. Obviously, there's more elk now than there was in two thousand and ten, you know. And part of the distribution, you know, working with David Lancaster on the hunting zones to concentrate, we know we have, you know, more elk here. Here's at least the number that we have. You know, what can we realistically, you know, harvest out of that? You know, that's kind of where that's gonna go with the new environmental document. But until that's done, and we do identify and analyze those tag quota ranges, I can't increase, you know, the tags.
And the shared tags, are they part of the fifty-four?
Yeah, they're, well, they're still underneath the old environmental document. So that's not extra tags, it's still analyzed. So like, on the north coast this year, we're at the max. The shared tags won't apply for the north coast, because I can't, however, see any more elk underneath that environmental document. Some of the other areas of the state, we're not at the maximum cap in the document with the general tags. You can implement those. So when we redo the environment document, up the tag quota ranges, those shared tags can be implemented on the north coast.
And that's gonna be in December?
They'll start that process in September, and then it goes all the way through the commission process to be adopted in April, so.
Okay. I guess, I, I'm uncomfortable, because I'm afraid you're asking the county to do us a favor and sit on the side over here while we take care of this business of coming up with an elk plan, while we come up with this business of how many tags are gonna be in your community, while we come up with an environmental analysis, when you're sitting on the people who have the information, and you're not, I see all these folks out here that I know that could probably, they could probably tell me how many elk are in the county, and it would probably be within twenty. But, so I'm uncomfortable that you're asking us to sit on the side. I would be more comfortable if you were asking one of our supervisors to join you in the discussion and the review of the two drafts, and it could still remain a private document, but you might be able to pass it off to a supervisor and say, at least read this, so you know where we're coming from.
I'm more than willing to, you know, sit down and then talk about this stuff, and show you what, you know, how the process works, or how, what we look at in analyzing that environmental document, so.
Supervisor Howard, chime in.
I'll reserve my comments until public comments reached.
So there's a lot of people that have come here today to hear your presentation, and I'm sure they're pleased to hear what they heard, but I know that they have some input. And so at this time, we'll take public comment, please. And I'll tell you what I'm gonna do, is anybody that wants to speak, please come sign up, and that way we can call you in order. And identify yourself, try to keep your comments to three minutes, and try not to repeat the person ahead of you, or you can say ditto, but you're first.
My name is Don Steinruck. I'm currently employed with the Talawada Nation, which is formerly the Smith River Rancheria, as the NAGPRA Specialist, which is Native American Graves' Protection Repetiation Act Program. And I'm here to talk about the management of the elk herd. I live currently on the conflicts of South Bank Road and Lake Earl, as you come off of Dr. Fine Bridge off of 101. I do have the elk herd that is currently on Blake Alexander's Dairy, a croach upon my area. Not only the twelve to fifteen bulls that I see there now beautifully in velvet, but also the cows and their calves as well. The elk have been here for over thousands and thousands of years. The indigenous people of this county have maintained this population of food resource for many years, through bows and arrows, and also elk traps. Two years before eighteen fifty-seven, there was a treaty that was negotiated between a man, a headman of Guilish, and three citizens of Crescent City. The treaty was never ratified by state and federal level, but the Talawada people decided that it was still in ratification. But it stipulated, one stipulation what was given, was that hunting and fishing would be at their pleasure, and the state of California would endorse that. While that treaty was never negotiated. Two years later, Crescent City was formulated as an incorporated city. The United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous People, adopted by the United Nations Rights Council on the twenty-ninth of June two thousand and six, and by the United States on the tenth of December two thousand and ten, states the following articles. Article eleven, indigenous people have the right to practice and revitalize their cultural traditions and customs. This includes the right to maintain, protect, and develop past, present, and future manifestations of their cultures, such as archaeological, historical sites, artifacts, designs, ceremonies, technology, and visual and performing arts and pleasures, and literature. Article nineteen states, shall consult and cooperate in good faith with indigenous peoples concerned with their own representative institutions, in order to obtain their free, prior, informed consent before adopting and implementing legislature or administrative measures. Article twenty, point two, indigenous people derived of their means of subsistence and development are entitled to just and fair redress. Article twenty-four, point one, indigenous peoples have the right to their traditional medicines and to maintain their health practices, including the conservation of their vital medicinal plants, animals, which is the elk, and minerals. Article twenty-five, indigenous people have the right to maintain and strengthen their distinctive spiritual relationship with their traditionally owned or otherwise occupied and used lands, territories, waters, coastal areas, and other resources, and to uphold their responsibilities to future generations in this regard.
Don, I'm gonna ask you to wrap it up, please.
The last point, indigenous people have the right to maintain, control, and protect, and develop their cultural heritage, traditional knowledge, and traditional cultural expressions. They have the right to knowledge of properties of the flora and fauna, and the right to maintain those. The elk herds of Del Norte County do not come under the control of private individuals. They are under the jurisdiction of the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, and they belong to the people of California.
Don, thank you.
Okay.
I will ask you to please give your card to the gentleman from Fish and Wildlife, Fish and Game, and please use what leverage you have, the same that we're asking for in the coordination process, to be part of this plan.
One more last comment, that is, I'm asking the, to have at least ten elk killed a year out of these herds for the Talawada Nation people. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Looks like Teri Ostra.
Okay, and I'm gonna, just for the ground rules, there's a timer here. When it hits two, it's three minutes, with thirty seconds left to go, it'll go orange, and then when it goes red, please pass to the next person. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Jeremy Kunostra. My husband and I own a business called The Dutch Gardener. It's a nursery and an urban farm, classified as an urban farm. We are located on the corner of Roy and Birch Street. We own approximately five acres, one acre wide by five acres long, and we are at the base of the national park there. We have a terrible elk problem. Last year, we were required, because of the devastation, to close our nursery in August. Normally, we'll run through October. I replanted our garden that we eat off all winter for ourselves, plus we harvest and sell at the farmer's market every Saturday. I replanted that garden three times. The fourth time, I finally said, "To hell with it. I'll just buy my vegetables at the farmer's market like everyone else." And the damage that is caused by the elk are not just, you know, walking through your property, stomping through, you know, your display gardens, and stomping through ponds, and that kind of thing that are there for enjoyment of anyone that comes on our property. They also just ripped, you know, ripped through the plastic greenhouses, and were a huge issue. Yes, I could put a fence up. Right now, I don't have twenty thousand extra dollars to survey my property line between where we are and the parks. It is totally overgrown. I don't even know where that property line is at this point in time. And also, the type of fencing that's required is extensive. I would encourage more hunting. I grew up on Howland Hill. I graduated from high school here in nineteen sixty-seven. As my father, the commercial fisherman, used to say, you know, people had to go out of the county to harvest an elk. We didn't have any here at all. And I've never seen an elk until recently. So please, if you'd like input from people who have small businesses that require, you know, that really need open land and without the devastation of elk, please give us a call. I'd like to support you in any way. And I'd like to close by saying my husband's favorite line, which is, elk are beautiful animals on someone else's property.
Thank you. Next, please.
I think it's Phoebe Lenhart.
Thank you very much for your time. My name is Phoebe Lenhart. I live on Humboldt Road. I am a writer, and I'm actually in the process of trying to put together a brochure, a viewing brochure for tourists here in Del Norte County about viewing elk. And I share with Mr. Gitlin's and your frustration in regard to trying to get information from the Department of Fish and Wildlife. I've had many conversations with Mr. David Lancaster, and I will say that he's never mentioned either of these two gentlemen to me. And I have been trying to get information about elk for this brochure for the county. So before I leave, I would like to please ask Joe for your phone number.
Why don't you, and Phoebe, would you address the board?
Thank you. Anyway, this is, I think, important, because I think you've had the same connection problems, and I have not been able to get through. I also understand about traffic collisions. I have approached the Parks Department numerous times about getting better signage, so that we can have more caution for tourists visiting the area, and thus less collisions. And again, I'm running into bureaucratic stonewalls about no one's able to put up beacons on elk warning signs to attract people's attention, so that they do drive more slowly. But in regard specifically to the elk herd, I think at one point in time, from the research that I've done, there used to be tens of thousands of elk in this area. And right now, we're talking about a mere one thousand six hundred head. So my question for the Department of Fish and Wildlife in regard to their study, and I think you will want to know this too, because I'm trying to find out how many herd we have, how many head are in each herd, how many bulls are in each herd. I think we just need to know more than sixteen hundred as a number. I think I would like to have a specific herd and number with each. I'm trying to put those in this travel brochure, so that the tourists know where they can go, in the Smith River area, in the Ender Beach area, to look for elk. So I think it'd be very helpful if we could have specific location and herd numbers provided by this department. And that wraps up my conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Richard Beauty.
You said Richard Bunting.
Oh, sorry, it's not printed, so it's hard for me to read.
Pardon?
Yes, Richard. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Richard Bunting. I live out on Elk Valley Road. I've been here for some thirty years. I've had the elk devastate my property numerous times, tear out fences, just trash the place. And it seems to be, it is a growing problem. And elk are beautiful on somebody else's property. I can understand that completely. But it seems to be this county has an awful lot of government land. It's either owned by the state, the federal government. The state told me to put up fences, or use my dogs to run the elk off. If I use my dogs to run the elk off, they run them across the road. Guess what? This car hits them. Whose fault is that? I hear they're gonna blame me. Okay? Catch twenty-two there. You want me to build fences? Well, I'm waiting for them to build fences. It's very expensive. They've got the land, let them build the fences, put the elk on the government land. Then they can see the devastation in the park, they will manage quite well, I'm sure they will. People can come to the park and enjoy the elk. That's great. They're kept off the roads, they're kept off of private ground, and I really feel for businesses that are losing their profits, it's all profit, that they lose for what the damage of these elk do. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Eileen Cooper.
Eileen Cooper, and I live at Roy and Birch. I think a very important key element in this whole plan is to avoid the conflict with private lands. And that is the very most important aspect to resolve these issues. I mean, we love the elk, and we should have a lot of elk. And it would be nice to have them and not have these conflicts. I think there needs to be a strong implementation plan that assists private property. And I think there should be an identification of elk corridors. Perhaps there are certain areas where conflict, you know, is unavoidable, and we need to look at providing certain corridors, and maybe interviews or public workshops where we can identify corridors would be important. Because we have huge public lands in the national forests. Then we have the private lands, and then we have huge public lands on the coast. So clearly, this is a corridor issue. The elk are tremendously important to maintaining good habitat at Lake Earl Wildlife Area. They glaze, we need secession in our ecology, and elk are an essential part of that. And the forest needs the elk to maintain, to help maintain the underbrush. And maybe someday, we'll even get some big predators back. But we have to provide corridors, we have to make monies available for those corridors to be established, we have to have monies available to assist private properties, so that they can have elk without conflict. And we would all enjoy this. And I think, you know, fighting over a few- And I, I think, you know, fighting over a few elk this way or that way is inconsequential as far as take goes. I think we, the main goal has to be maintained. We need a healthy, viable population. And so we're always going to come against these conflict problems, no matter what the number of take is. So, um, and I think we're, with all our public lands, we're capable of having many more elk, actually. So if we get over these conflicts, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next.
Doug Corrigan.
Good morning, and thank you for everybody showing up. I'm Doug Corrigan. I'm the, uh...
Chair of the Fish and Game.
Chairman, thank you. Of the, uh, it's brand new, so, of our local Fish and Game Commission, and I report directly to the Board of Supervisors. And I guess I have more, what we've ended up with in our discussions over the elk when people come to us, we have more questions than we do answers. People need to realize that eighty percent, and probably climbing, of this county is public land. A lot of it is unhuntable because it's parkland, whether that be state or federal. I've had people talk about the possibility of juvenile hunts, of getting, you know, possibly cow hunts. I don't know the, the, whatever the number is, I don't know the, um, relationship of cows to bulls, so which ones do you go after? Certainly, that should be in a plan. From people I've talked to, we've had many, many more blacktail in, in recent years. I can't, I can't even remember the last time I've seen a blacktail. And so there has to be some sort of displacement going on that probably is, I'm guessing, not a natural thing. Hunting permit increases. People don't want to see just depredation permit raising. They want that, that hunting issue to be available to everyone, whether it's by draw or, well, it'd have to be by draw, I suppose. So, you know, we have, we have very, as a, as a commission, we have very, very poor information, too. So when we, we start talking about even trapping and moving, uh, we really don't know whether that's possible. We know it's been done before, and that may be something that, uh, may, may be able to be done to reduce the herd. So, yeah, I, I mean, I get questions, so, um, all I can do at this point until a draft comes out is to, uh, try to seek information as best I can from the supervisors. So, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Glad you highlighted part of the problem there, lack of information. Next, please.
Michael Lofton.
Thank you for your time. These herds are broken into pods and break down. And the reason they're coming into our public lands, that our lands, our private lands, is because we're ordered to get rid of all endangered species, such as Scotchbloom and other things. The state parks do nothing to eliminate anything. They let it grow. They got no choice but to come to our, our fields. If we fail to remove our endangered species from our land, we can be fined. We're allowed to dump it at the dump free of charge. We all have to take it out ourselves. I've had a horse damaged, seventeen hundred dollars of damage, and I just had a butcher steer destroyed by an elk. The first time, they said the horse fell over on a stake. Well, I say somebody lacks a little common sense there. The veterinarian stated that, yes, it was done by an elk. The cow, thank God, we got, what did we get? We got, what they said, uh, they would make amends out of it. Well, we got the butcher steer that's probably three hundred pounds light, and the animal was destroyed. It was given to a nonprofit organization in the county, which I have no problem with. It was taken care of. I believe it was the same elk that gored my horse. Some of them are radical, some of them. I counted thirteen bulls, thirteen males, smalls, and seventy-seven cows in my, what, ten, twelve acres. I had to feed my animals out of hay. I had, no, no, when I moved in there five years ago, it was thirty-one elk. In five years. And that's just one of the pods and the things going on. I was told that they would put a fence up, but I would have to pay for the fence. And then if the deer got through the fence, then I could kill it. Well, I don't know. It's twenty dollars a foot or what? You know what? You know, man, I'm, I'm a very small, minute thing in this grain, the grain of sand in this life. And for a man to tell me something that's supposed to be educated enough to, this is like ten years of eating crap, is what I'm saying. They're not gonna share with us, as that one officer told me, the president can't touch us. And I think that's pretty indignant of a public servant to us, to protect our lands and to care about the people of this community. But they don't care about this community. They only care about themselves and taking more land and taking our tax dollars and making it into the nothing to where we pay them for their, I call, government bullshit. I'm sorry for using what I just said, but you know something? It just comes down to this, common sense a little bit. If I go from thirty-one to a hundred elk on a ten, ten, ten space, and that's one herd that breaks into pods every year. And I, I cannot understand why we can't, as the man said, bring in some tribal, let them, let them have the deer. I'm all, I'm in the elk. I'm all for it. I love elk. My wife loves them. She loves them watching them. But they, I put in short fences so I did not have to fix fences. And time's up. You have a wonderful day.
Thank you. Next, please.
Helen Ferguson.
I'm Helen Ferguson, and I'm gonna make a couple comments, and I'm also gonna speak for my uncle Frank McNamara. He can't hear very well. And I'll talk about him first. He's ninety-four years old, and the elk have been absolutely devastating on his property. They are destroying his fruit trees, they ate his garden. Uh, his wife has to walk around with a walker, and their garden area is one of their few pleasures that they can participate in. And last year, he opened his sliding glass door and was met by two or three bull elk, and one lowered his head to come towards him. He has the twelve-foot fences up. They still manage to break them down and come into the apple and plum trees. And I think it's ridiculous to think that someone ninety-four years old should have to have a thirty-odd-six in their hand to open the door to go in their backyard, because he was told if they posed a threat to his life, he could shoot them. But think about that. It's off the radar screen, as far as being practical. The thing as far as, um, that really is mystifying to me is that I've been in contact with the national and state parks, and to this point, the Fish and Game Department have not coordinated with them. I'm trying to determine who has the authority and responsibility for the elk, whether on the state and national park lands. The Fish and Game policy has, how it's supposed to be handled as far as the National Forest Service is concerned. But there's nothing about the national and state parks. And by the legal counsel's own admission, uh, in Sacramento for the state parks, they said they're embarrassed to say they're not really sure who has the authority and responsibility on the state park lands that's included in the Redwood National Park boundaries. The same, we've been two weeks now trying to get the answer from the national parks. As far as Fish and Game is concerned, I think they have the process completely backwards. The experts on the elk are the local people and the local elected officials. Many times, I've gone through the planning process here in our county where the plan is put together, and it's kind of like being fed through a tube. Here it is, comment on it. And the process that's supposed to work doesn't work. Far as I'm concerned, the management plan that they have in Sacramento, Sacramento right now, isn't worth the paper that it's written on. It should have started with our private citizens, people adjacent to the parks, wildlife areas on private lands. They should have been contacted, and our county board.
I ask you to wrap it up, Helen.
Okay. Public health and safety is a huge, the housing and residential districts damage. The ag is important from an economic standpoint, but small compared to our health and safety.
Thank you very much. Maybe Brian will finish for you. No? Next, please.
Rob Mellow. Miller?
There are two distinct individuals.
Thank you. I'm Rob Miller from Smith River. It's interesting to me that the Fish and Wildlife Department believes that there's somewhere between a hundred and thirteen and four hundred and twenty-nine elk in Donar County. I, I know exactly opposite of that. There's more than twice that. There's at least a thousand. And the folks who have to fight them on a daily basis and watch them on a daily basis know, and Fish and Game obviously, Fish and Wildlife obviously, don't know how many elk are here. It's interesting to me that they say that they offer fifty-four tags for Humboldt and Delnort County. And they think there's sixteen hundred elk in Humboldt and Donar County. Hopefully, if they get a wildlife management plan for elk, they can specify in some areas where there's more private land issues, like Donar County, and specifically putting tags into Donar County and not Humboldt and Delnort County. Because it's a serious problem. Um, there's a lot of people that have spent a lot of money building a lot of fence. Some folks haven't built fence. But even when you build fence, elk are pretty smart. I watched on Sunday night elk walk out of a field that was fenced, walk around the fence, walk down Highway one oh one, and back into a nice, green, lush pasture. Because they like the nice, green, lush pasture, because the, the public lands in this county basically supply them no feed whatsoever. We had the same issue, as we all remember, with Aleutian geese. The public land supplied no feed. And so where were the geese? Same exact issue with elk. And they're moving more and more and more. And fifty years ago, there were a few elk around that I'd been around, but there's a whole bunch now. And if we harvest fifty-four in Donar County, that will not reduce the population in Donar County, if we took fifty-four a year. So I think they need to take a very serious look at the population, because they don't know how many are here. And we need to be able to control them to keep them somehow pushed back away from private property.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I have no one else.
Anybody member of the public that we missed would like to address the board on this issue? Okay, then we're gonna bring it back to the board. Comment regarding public lands, private lands, and what you have to do to get a deprivation permit. It's just stupid things keep popping in my head, like if I have animals on my property, I don't go to my neighbor and tell them they have to fence my animals out. And maybe, you know, the agencies, State Park, National Park, Fish and Wildlife, should manage, um, they should be the ones putting up the fences to keep the animals in their property and/or establishing a grant program where you can pay to have a willing participant fence private land with your money. So it's just a thought as you go through the process. But Supervisor, how are you? Were you reserving comments?
As a wildlife and fisheries biologist, I feel your pain. I know Director Bonham has told me many times, and more specifically in direct conversation in November, that you guys have been working on this plan since two thousand and three. It's too bad it's taken this long just to get draft form and sitting on the director's desk for approval and get back out to the board so we could react to it in a public forum, but I am feeling your pain. We have a real issue in the state of California, and I have to say, a great deal of state that doesn't look out for our best interests, and I mean Delnort's best interest, really controls what happens in our own backyard. And, you know, Mr., Mr. Palmer, this applies on your shoulders, too. And I know you're trying to make efforts up there to create this early successional habitat that Ms. Cooper spoke about and so many people have alluded to. It's why these elk are in our green pastures out in the Smith River bottoms. It's why we feel the impact of these critters every day. And I gotta reflect back on some comments that were brought forth from our Native American representatives in the audience. You know, I've been told stories many, many times, whether I worked for Elk Valley Ranchery or through conversation with the Uroch tribe. They managed the lands very well back then. I can remember stories of their parents telling stories to their children how they drug fire behind them after their hunts to make sure that that late successional land was still available. And we've created a lot of problems in this state on our public lands where that late successional habitat is no longer available. And it's too bad we can't get to that point where that balance is necessary. Our community, as expressed today, has an abundance, eighty percent, public lands that, in my opinion, and a lot of folks' opinions, aren't being managed properly to this day, and we're playing catch-up. It causes a lot of fire, devastating fire, and impacts to our community on a daily basis. But I have to reflect back on where we've been and where we would like to go. I think the department has heard our comments directly. I am very happy that Dr. Loft has offered to get together with us post-August fourth and fifth of the commission's meeting to work with stakeholders in this community. I'm sure Supervisor Hemmingson and myself and the other folks on the board will be more than happy to sit down and discuss this with you. I hope the process is more public, because I know there's other stakeholders in this audience that would like to participate in those conversations, us large landowners. As far as the environmental impact statement or environmental document that's being formed by Joe Hobbs, I'm glad to see that on a fast-track timeline. I hope it does get to the point in two thousand and sixteen where this thing gets processed very quickly. And that number, as Supervisor McClure has alluded to, actually increases to actually better help us manage those populations. So we've got a difficult situation, and I know you've heard a lot of negative comment today, but my promise to you as one Board of Supervisors to work closely with you to help find issues to these solutions and make sure that you have available options in your bag of tools in that draft management plan to really help make this difference happen for our community.
Final comments? Supervisor Gitlin?
Well, this is quite an interesting meeting. I've heard a lot of culling down questions today. Mr. Palmer, we'd like you to cull down the forest so we can manage this, won't have as many fires. We heard about culling down our herds of elk, wild elk. We heard about culling down the overreach of government. So I'm gonna say to you, Dr. Loft, and Mr. Hobbs, and Mr. Manji, who's not here, and Mr. Lancaster, let us have control back. Let us control our elk population. Work with us, because clearly, what we have are a lot of very unhappy people, and it's getting worse. So thank you for very seriously considering that request.
Supervisor Hemmingson, Supervisor McClure.
Again, I want to thank you for trying to get your head around this, but I, again, would urge that there needs to be a two-way dialogue prior to asking for public comment. And I think that that two-way dialogue could be, could benefit both the community and Fish and Wildlife. So I would suggest that we send a formal letter to Fish and Wildlife requesting again the information, the draft form that it's already, that this report is already in, to be delivered to the Delnort County Board of Supervisors for review. And I would suggest that we CC that both to the resources, that we CC that to John Laird, and we also CC it to our state senator who is on the resources board, on the resources committee.
Okay, since it wasn't posed as necessarily as an action item, I think that it's appropriate that if I do not hear any dissent from board members, that it will be the direction of this board by consensus to direct staff to prepare such a letter and deliver it as proposed. I, too, would like to thank you for coming. I did hear that you were going to be back in the community in August. And again, just one last time, communication and cooperation, early and often. I know the early and often isn't written in there, but the coordination and cooperation is. Please work with us, which means working with the community. So thank you very much. So thank you very much. Okay, we're going to take a brief recess, and then we have two more items. One, a public hearing, the draft ordinance, the general plan, and then also the budget. We'll be back in five minutes.
Okay.
All right, we have an 11 o'clock time item. I apologize to those that are here for that. It is to hold a public hearing pursuant to the draft ordinance and resolution of the amendment of the general plan for the TPZ rezone, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Et cetera, et cetera.
Randy?
Well, I kind of sense this may be a little bit anticlimactic after our last discussion, but it may not be a bad thing.
It's a good segue to the budget.
Yeah, it could be. Bridge that gap. So the item before you is essentially the minor subdivision of a 40-acre parcel in the community of Fort Dick. This is a property that's owned by the Green Diamond Resources Company immediately north of the prison. The 40-acre parcel is bisected by Lake Earl Drive. On the west-hand side of Lake Earl Drive, the 27 acres, roughly 27 acres, is within the California coastal zone. The 13 acres on the east side is not. The project, if you want to put it that way, is essentially that portion on the eastern side outside of the coastal zone. And again, this would be functionally a minor subdivision. What would happen on the west side would be the creation of four new parcels ranging in size from two acres to six acres. There's a small tributary of Russell Creek on the southern boundary of the project area that, through the subdivision review process and the planning commission's consideration of the item, has been assigned a resource buffer. We've, through the subdivision process, dealt with a number of different issues, as you can imagine with any subdivision. To highlight a few of those, in this case, we dealt with issues related to necessary road improvements and access, touched on the biological issues. Prior to the project being submitted, we did engage with the applicants in a pre-application consultation, which was a very helpful process, I feel, in this case. A lot of the issues that would have otherwise probably come up through the environmental review process, we were able to deal with on the front end through that pre-application process. And to the applicant's credit, they did incorporate many of those suggestions, in fact, I think probably all those suggestions, into their eventual submittal. So we ended up with a very good project. However, in order to facilitate the minor subdivision, we had to deal with the larger issue, which is the general plan land use and the zoning designation of the property, which is timberland and TPZ respectively. In order to accommodate the subdivision, there needed to be a necessary change in land use and zoning. And what's been proposed is a change from TPZ to RR2, rural residential, two-acre minimum under the zoning. And under the general plan, amending the land use from timberland to rural residential, one dwelling unit per two-acre density. Again, if you, in your application packet, you have the entire planning commission staff report with all, with all those issues. You can see that a SEQUA document was prepared. That was an initial study that resulted in a mitigated degenerative declaration that identified mitigation primarily having to do with sensitive botanical resources and repairing habitat on the property. The item, again, before the board, because the planning commission has basically taken action to tentatively approve the subdivision, would be that rezone and general plan amendment. It's a little bit different than your typical rezone because the TPZ provisions under the state tax code provide a different process for the rezoning of TPZ lands because there's a tax-sheltered protection, so to speak, for the TPZ properties. It has to go before the California Board of Forestry to look at the merchantable timber, the value of the timberland to the state. What you have are draft ordinances that have been reviewed by county council. The provisions of the Government Code section in the Public Resources Code that dictate the process to rezonate TPZ lands have been incorporated into the resolution and ordinance. We've received an application indicating that the applicant has provided for a notice of exemption from the timberland conversion permit requirements of the state. That's another hurdle that they have to jump through. That's also why this item before you is preliminary. It's an introduction of the ordinances. It's to conduct the public hearing pursuant to the Government Code. We did a public hearing notification that included properties within a mile exterior boundary of the property. That's much larger than what we typically do, but again, because the TPZ provisions are unique in that respect, we did send that notification out. Got a lot of help from Kylie Haraford, clerk of the board, on that, and I appreciate that. And so here we are. This is the public hearing. We're here to solicit public input and comment into the project. After the TPZ process plays out at the Board of Forestry, it'll have to come back to the Board of Supervisors for a four-fifths approval. After that happens, we can proceed with the subdivision and the parcel map recordation process.
Good. Any preliminary questions from board members? All right, then I am going to open the public hearing at this time. Any member of the public may speak on this item, and would invite you to do so. Public?
I would...
Please step forward, identify yourself.
Hi, I'm Eva Wells. I own 53 acres just downstream from this proposed division. And I am interested in the TPZ zoning. And do I understand that this is only the beginning of this process, that there will be a public hearing held to discuss?
This is the public hearing.
This is the public hearing.
Yes.
So then I do, I didn't come prepared with questions because I misunderstood this. But what I am interested in is knowing, is there going to be testing on Russell Creek? To know that there isn't going to be any during the process and after the process of the change in the zoning and the subdivision? And also then, how will the change in the TPZ zone on the west side of Lake Earl Drive affect the other TPZ zoning in the area?
I'm going to invite staff to reply to your questions.
I probably should have clarified, this is not a TPZ zone change of the entire 40 acres. This is just a portion on the east side of Lake Earl. The portion on the west side, the remainder parcel would remain in TPZ. So it wouldn't affect any properties that exist beyond those boundaries. This is just specific to the 13-acre portion on the, on the east side within the project area, the subdivision area. As far as the testing, through the SEQUA process, we did solicit comments through agencies such as the Regional Water Quality Control Board. We didn't receive any comments back indicating that testing would be necessary. I think part of that has to do with the inclusion of the buffer to protect that water course. So I believe that answers the lady's questions.
Okay. Any other public comment? Okay, then I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Are we extending the public hearing until next meeting, or we're closing the public hearing, giving directions to staff to bring us back something?
Yeah, and again, procedurally, this is a little bit different. This is to conduct the public hearing for the TPZ rezone. We're doing that. We've received public comment. Now it has to go back to the applicant. They've got to go to the Board of Forestry. We will eventually bring it back after that process is concluded for the consideration of the ordinances and the resolutions to adopt those. So again, this is, this is a public hearing, but there will be additional opportunity for public comment. It will have to come back before the board.
Okay. Any other public hearing? I mean, public comment during the hearing here? No? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, public comment period, on this particular item regarding the rezone on the east side. My only question was, you mentioned something about TPZ and conversion and tax recoupment. Who does that negotiating? Is that going to be the assessor in conjunction with valuation by CAL FIRE?
Essentially, yeah. It's, it's, yes, the tax, the county tax assessor would engage in that discussion with the property owner, probably the Board of Equalization as well.
Good. Any other questions, comments? Supervisor McClure.
This is for you, Randy. Is there any restriction when a parcel spans both coastal and non-coastal lands to do a subdivision? Does the, I know we're not touching the coastal side of it, but because it was one parcel, do we have to, is there a requirement for us to, since we're making coastal property smaller, do we need to?
Well, we're not making coastal property smaller. The portion that's within the coastal zone would remain, the remainder from the subdivision, so it remains what it is. Under the State Subdivision Map Act, the remainder parcel is excluded from the consideration of the project, which is how we viewed this project. We did have discussions with staff from the Coastal Commission, and they agreed with that interpretation.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Supervisor Howard?
It's great. Glad to hear that. That wouldn't influence anything. Stay in your own playland, maybe. The, I am encouraged by these efforts of Green Diamond. I'd like to see more of these type of projects take place where available in your lands in the Fort Dick bonds or in the Smith River area. Obviously, we need to encourage these type of efforts to get more properties back on the tax roll. Because TPZ lands oftentimes don't get utilized to their best advantage in this community. So, like I said, I'm encouraged by this and move to approve the draft ordinance and resolution for amendments of the general plan land use and immediate TPZ rezone for the portion of 101.
There's no action to be taken regarding that resolution at this meeting, is what we'll be doing as directing staff.
Right.
After the hear from CAL FIRE with the assessment to bring back those resolutions for action.
That's correct.
Yeah, I was trying to get to that part in the reason, but that's okay.
There is no action to be taken other than direction.
Oh, okay.
Other comments, questions? Okay, then, by consensus, not hearing any objections, unless I do, I'm going to direct staff to return these items for final approval after receiving evidence from CAL FIRE. Okay? Thanks very much. Which takes us to item number 31. Discuss, take action as necessary to modify the fiscal year budget. Let's just, without going through all seven, budget, batter up.
And I would suspect you don't want me to read all 10 pages either. This is the first step in regards to the Board of Supervisors getting to a final budget. As the board has been aware, since April, we've been meeting with different departments on their requested budgets. So each individual department is asked to come forward with a requested budget based on some parameters that were given, basically, to maintain the net county cost from the previous year, with the understanding that there are additional costs associated with personnel and benefits and other things that, on an annual basis, are obviously going to increase. This process will end by October 2nd with a balanced budget. Part of the issue that Delnort County deals with on an annual basis is that we are not fortunate enough to be dealing with reserves. So we won't be bringing forward requests to the Board of Supervisors to designate reserves as, through a formal process. So we are very much dependent on our fund balance, and we will need to see what our end-of-the-year fund balance is, as well as any revenues that are received between now and that closing. The auditor controller will generally do that typically in July with some final information in August. The budget before you today is in deficit, about $2.5 million. That is down about $800,000 from what we started at. Many of the issues that are related to this are costs associated with employee benefits, PERS, healthcare costs, and some unrealized revenues that obviously happen during any given year. We've made some changes over the year that the board should be aware of as far as the health fund to try to stabilize costs as much as possible. We have looked at just about every... We have looked at just about every opportunity that's come before us in realizing revenues to offset the general fund. There's been a considerable amount of increase in the overall budget typically associated with realignment. That doesn't mean that that necessarily associates with balancing our general fund. So last year's budget was balanced similarly to what we're attempting to do this year, which was using attrition on staffing of any types of general fund positions at this point, unfunding vacant positions, looking at services and supplies, looking at increased revenues. There have been a few of those at this point, and as the state finalizes their budget, they are getting close, but they are not completely done. As they start finalizing that, we'll have all of the information available so that we can start making those final changes and recommendations for the final budget. I believe that most of the departments at this point have done their best to meet the budget objectives. We have a couple of departments that we will still be looking at in regards to changes and revenue that are coming in and any transfers. There's been a lot of work back and forth with non-general fund and general fund departments to be able to offset general fund costs through services that are provided internally. So those service departments have spoken and come up with some plans. The fact of our budget right now is that revenue is, is not increasing very significantly, although there are some signs. Property tax is slightly up as well as sales tax. But we have to remember, slightly up for property tax means slightly up from last year, not previous years, which there was a significant drop that we're still, still dealing with. There's limited development in Delmar County, although Director Constable has been reviewing on a monthly basis their revenues that come in. And, you know, there is some encouraging signs. There's some development happening and some home starts. But they are considerably down from previous years. When I say previous years, historic years. So at this point, what we're asking the board to do is adopt the recommended budget. This gives spending authority for the county and the ability for us to work under the resolution passed by a previous board to work on the final budget and come back with a balanced budget by October 2nd.
Thank you. Questions from board members? Okay, can I get a motion to further discussion?
How to make that motion?
And the motion is to take action as necessary to modify the fiscal year recommendations. The recommended budget is presented by documents. Two, establish, eliminate, and transfer positions within the budget that units is outlined in attachment A. Three, approve the position list request for wireless device stipends as provided in attachment B. Four, direct the budget team to continue to research and analyze all available cost-saving items. Five, approve and adopt the fiscal year recommendation 15, 16. Budgets is modified in spreadsheet attachment C. Six, direct departments that no fixed asset purchases should be allowed prior to the adoption of the final budget without supervisor's approval, the entire board's approval. And seven, direct departments that no budget transfer will be allowed to transfer funds from salaries and benefits to services and supplies unless determined to be an emergency by the CAO and the auditor controllers requested by the CAO. Okay, let's move to second, a public comment.
Chair Finnegan, one minor change to Exhibit A is a title change on one of the positions. Instead of administrative analyst, it should say staff services analyst. There's no change in salary or ranges. It's a merit position. So I would make a recommendation that it be, the motion be modified to acknowledge that, and we'll amend that.
Okay, and that was the correction to it, attachment A on the agenda that you provided to us.
Right. And as you'll notice on here, there are no general fund position requests. The board had asked to look at some positions, one in particular in the CDD department for a resource planner. We will have to see what the final budget will allow us to do to even consider that position, but we have considered it to this point, and we haven't brought forward any general fund funded positions yet.
Okay. Public questions, comments? Back to the board. Questions, comments? Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes, Jay, you mentioned the 2.5 million deficit, which is up $800,000?
Approximately, yes.
Okay. Now, this is what, 10% of our, this is all general fund impact, is that correct?
It is.
So that's what, 20, about 10% of the estimated thereabouts?
Yes, approximately.
So my concern is how will we close that gap as we move forward?
Well, as I mentioned earlier and kind of explained, we will close out the year and see what our fund balance is, and then we will be, bring recommendations back to the Board of Supervisors. It's unknown exactly what that last push will be. On an annual basis, we have utilized one-time revenue that might be available, and we'll look at that. The last effort that we would use would be some sort of impact on employees or employee salaries or benefits. Those are negotiated items. So there are a few avenues that we'll look at. This is not, not, this is a fairly typical process in that there will be a final push. The amount will be known probably in the middle of Ju-, in July or August.
A little housekeeping, I would add, is that the motion in regards to agenda, referencing Agenda A or attachment A, referenced the corrected items. Maker of the motion?
Yes.
Okay. So that's, that's been done. Any other comments?
I just have my normal yearly comment about collections, where it costs us $88,000 to reflect $18,500. And I know it's all this explanation that doesn't always go there, but it seems like we could make that look a little better.
Noted. Thank you. I just want to note, all the hard work that went into this was department heads, union staff, auditors, all your support staff. And that you will continue to slave over this for the next, until several weeks, until October 2nd. I do also want to notate that we had a little surprise to the negative in the PILT money was taken away at the last minute. It was promised in the budget by the governor. It was continued to be in the, in the budget after the governor and the Republicans and the Democrats met on Tuesday, and then the legislature pulled it out after maybe somebody overplayed their position, but was taken out on Thursday. So how many hundreds of thousands we lose there, three something?
As of last year, that was about $700,000 in arrears and about $70,000 annually. And I will decline to comment on that because I have, outside of the public, and I'm not very happy with it because those are the types of funds that support our basic services. That's in lieu of property taxes that all the rest of us pay. So it is very frustrating. I'm hoping that at some point we'll have that discussion. I think there is a precedent set this year in the governor's budget. There was $644,000 annually still appropriated, which we have some other discussions in regards to the portion the county gets, but instead of the arrears at 700,000 and an annual at 70, we're going to see 20,000. So it's very frustrating.
Well, that was part of the game playing too, is that the backfilling Prop 98, which was already done, they already got paid, that they would try to take a portion of that money and shift it to schools rather than let it all come to counties for services that we provided that we didn't get paid for. And then, of course, the language going forward, permissible, which in good budget years, you're assuming, it allows them to do that, but it does not mandate them to make those payments. So ongoing fight, I'm sure Glen County will refile their suit now.
Well, there are a lot of counties affected by this, and, you know, it did look like Senator Wolk's attempt was going to make it through this year because it is a good budget year if you talk historically for California. You know, RC, RC, CSAC were all behind this, as, as well as the bulk of the counties. And so it is a little disappointing at this point.
Chair?
Yeah, and going along with that, you know, previous boards had approved fishing game to purchase properties in Delmar County because they were going to pay in lieu fees. And since they're not, maybe council should be looking at how we get those properties back.
Okay. Pull the vote, please.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Finnegan?
Yes. Was that yes to Jerry's motion about getting the property back? Or is that, all right.
It was a good one.
Let's, a great segue into considering miscellaneous legislative and budget matters pertinent to the county of Delmar.
Well, we just had the discussion over one of the more significant. And, you know, we have been following the budget bill and budget bill junior and all of the trailer bills. That was the one that I was most interested in, obviously, but there are a lot of, a lot of others out there. The governor made the choice of going forward to, to do some of his, what I would say, more, I guess, his more pressing fundings of programs. We're still following legislation because it's still out there, and the final part of the budget bill, we'll, we'll follow it, but there doesn't appear to be any more significant impact on the counties. We'll just see what comes forward.
Okay. And we'll stay in touch, there's all sorts of legislation coming forward, most of it unnecessary. We're going to go back to reporting out. Supervisor McClure?
I did.
You did? How about Supervisor Howard?
Thank you, Chair. Went to the Wild Rivers Community Foundation grand opening. It was great to see an active nonprofit in this community set the standard for helping to keep money in our local region. That's great effort and a long deserved pat on the back for that board and their, their staff. As Mr. Hemmingson, or Supervisor Hemmingson touched on, and I won't repeat, the fishing game commission was quite interesting, and hope to be engaging with them more frequently as a board supervisor and correcting them on where they've gone wrong procedurally. Also attended the local transportation commission meeting, and what was of most interest to me at that meeting was the actions that are now be, being taken by Caltrans specifically to the new crosswalk at the north end of town on Highway 101. And hopefully with some of those new actions, we'll see some corrective procedures on not delaying traffic during our peak tourist seasons. Also had discussions with CCD on some issues revolving White Rock Resort and a potentially pending sale of that, that property. Also had, as other constituents did, or supervisors in this case, quite a bit of feedback on the grand jury report and specifically on issues with the solid waste. I'm not entirely sure how those issues will be resolved, but I'm sure we'll be discussing that in the near future. Spent some time with Road Superintendent Jeff Daniels, specifically around Low Divide Road. And Jeff had prepared for me the amount of money that is being spent by the roads department on that road in my district, and it's staggering numbers, to the point where it makes me wonder why we haven't addressed Low Divide Road from a paving standpoint, given the amount of work that has gone into it annually, specifically around grading. We probably could have had the thing paid by now, so maybe in future discussion, we can address some of those issues. I want to pass on my compliments to former supervisor Sullivan on his wedding and pass on also Ann Stevens regret, regretted she couldn't be here today to compliment Supervisor Hemmingson on his dancing skills, given the fact that he's had knee replacement surgery. So I'm very, very proud to see that. And that will close my comments.
All about the base? Attaboy. All right, real brief, local transportation commission meeting, attended that, had a CSAC call, state association call, the board of directors. Did an agenda review, had a call in regarding the CSAC Finance Corporation Board of Directors, which I sit, went to the regional council rural counties meeting in the host county of the chair, which was Downyville. There still are places that have crooked hotel rooms with no hair dryers or irons, but it was beautiful. I've heard stories. And also had the Safe and Healthy Family Goals Committee meeting where we met and talked about the children's budget and got some direction there, helping some of the people that are going to be reporting and talking about partners to come. And also talked to several constituents regarding grand jury, regarding elk, regarding not blight as garbage, but as overgrown lawns or hayfields that double as people's backyards and the fire hazards, and what the process would be to get rid of that, mainly in the Klamath area. And with that, we will see you in two weeks. Have a good Fourth of July. Actually, we'll see you the first meeting in July.